Please rise from the podium, ladies and gentlemen.
The United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going with a baseball cap tonight as baseball's going through the championship series Friday, Saturday, and if necessary, Monday, but also boys across one tonight to go to the semifinals in sectional, so spring sports are having a good go, but they now false a spot. And we look to see everybody out there in room one. Welcome to the second regular board meeting of the Village of Boston Spa Board Trustees, May 27, 2025. Hope everybody had a great Memorial Day, and we are on Tuesday unusually because of that, so welcome. Can I get a motion? Just for the record, the trust agreement is absent. He's got a wedding he's going to be attending, and so safe travels to him in that as well. Otherwise, everybody else is here. There you go, motion that minutes of the May 12, 2025 being approved.
Make a motion.
Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion.
I have a couple of comments on the minutes. First comment is, as with the last minutes, in these minutes, there's no indication. I actually asked for an amendment to the minutes, just that Bernadette may have a statement. Furthermore, to make this statement understandable, it should not read that I made a statement in opposition to motion G, which no one knows what that means. It should read, as I stated at the meeting, that I read a statement in opposition to the mayor's budget. So why substitute motion G for the mayor's budget? Secondly, so, you know, if you want to make things transparent and easy for the public to understand, you wouldn't put in motion G. I'm just wondering, Mayor, do you look at these minutes before they go out? Do you look and edit them?
I don't touch them in terms of I don't take advance notice of these things. It's the clerk's minutes, so.
So you don't look at them ever? You never look at them and make edits?
Not advanced, no. Don't touch them.
Another minute, piece of minutes that isn't exactly what it should be, in my opinion. It says Attorney Bittner noted that if the board passed the budget resolution, it authorized was not obligated the board to issue bonds to purchase the fire truck. Then it says trustee Raymonds and Baskin disagreed with Attorney Bittner on that and want more information on the financial numbers. That's not really what happened. No one disagreed with the statement that the vote authorized, but did not oblige the vote, the board to vote, the board to issue a bond. Rather, we did not want to authorize the board to issue a bond without having the financial numbers supporting the financial viability of that bond, as is our responsibility to build these trustees. Furthermore, although trustee Raymond ultimately voted yes to authorize the bond, he stated clearly at the minute meeting, and it should be in the minutes, that he expects the fire department and mayor to produce without delay the number to support the financial viability and cost of the bond for the public. And that should also be added to the minutes. He voted yes with that understanding. And we have not received those numbers, and apparently we're about 15 days through the permissive referendum, so that is unfortunate. And there's another statement that needs, really needs changing. Under public comment, it states Martha Ica Lucci of Three Encore Drive feels that her daughter-in-law is being treated inappropriately on social media for voicing her opinion, end unquote. The statement should say "by the mayor," that her whole statement was, the point of this was that the mayor was not treating her appropriately on Facebook. It wasn't a general statement about forces at large. So to leap out that she's being treated inappropriately on social media for voicing her opinion by the mayor changes, you know, takes out the whole meaning of what she was talking about. And so that definitely needs to be added. So I'd like to make amendment that we add "treated inappropriately by the mayor" under public comment on social media for voicing opinion. Now, this, these changes would be less important if you hadn't inadvisably voted against the ability of the public to attach statements to the minutes, in which case people could read your statement, but you voted against that, so now there's less transparency than there should be with these minutes and for the public to see what's going on. So the minute makes it even more important that the minutes are actually accurate and complete.
With the amount of changes you're requesting, why did you not email them ahead of time?
I saw this during the holiday weekend, all right?
Email Friday and.
I did not look right.
Cancel.
Also.
It's one at a time for a stop or.
Go ahead.
I said this before other meetings, it's a courtesy if you have this extensive of changes to put it in email. I will accept for the motion where it says that Ben Baskin opposed the motion G outside the budget, but beyond that, I'm not accepting other changes.
Mary, excuse me, Mary, are you wanting to accept that same amendment? Because that will be the only amendment that would be approved at that point.
I'm asking for a change to "by the mayor" for Martha.
I'm not giving you that.
You're not going to.
Because you did not email in advance. It's available online for people to watch. We're not going to waste time every meeting over this, every time with your changes.
The minutes are important, and they should be.
They are important.
And this is, this is where we talk about the minutes. This is a legitimate, valid place to air concerns about the minutes. And it's, in my opinion, a biased set of minutes that the public should know is biased. And so I don't want to just.
Your opinion is biased. Let's move forward.
Yeah, just want to make clear, you're claiming that the clerk is biased.
I'm saying that there's.
To get it right in the minutes.
There's consistently misrepresentation of what Sean and I say in minutes and also actually what you say, Mayor, if it's not flattering to you. So the fact that there's a statement in there, Martha Ica Lucci feels that her daughter-in-law is being treated inappropriately.
Do you not want that change that I said I would offer?
On so, on social media for voicing her opinion.
That is his.
What? What'd you say?
This is going to hang.
This is just a very straightforward change that common decency should be made.
All in favor as amended by the amendment that Bernadette.
So you're not going to advise that Martha complained about the mayor?
I said I would offer that you oppose the budget.
And there's a vote being actively taken right now. All in favor. And I to avoid a tie possibility, all opposed.
I'm opposed to this. That is the way it's written, and I think you are deliberately misleading the public for your own political advantage in these minutes as written.
Okay, so it's three to one by voice vote, and the minutes are approved. Can I get a motion that minutes of the May 15, 2025 emergency meeting be approved?
Make a motion.
Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion.
Here, there's one little edit where it says Liz Cormos, A-9-High Goldard asks why the harder to get this on the agenda? The word "this" doesn't make any sense in this context. What you're referring to is the Conifer motion, motion B, which is clearly not an emergency motion.
To get motion B, I'm not opposed to that change, so it's fine.
To divide this or?
Yeah, to get motion.
So, Mary, do you accept that amendment, opposed?
Yes.
As amended, all in favor.
Aye.
And I opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Fern, your company's down first right now. How's that sound? Fern Hurley from Captain Community Giving Services is going to talk to us for five, 10 minutes about, if you want to stay behind, that's a quick spot for you, that way you've got something in front of you if you want to focus on all that. But she's going to talk to us about Captain and their services and how they're utilizing funding for the village, et cetera. And maybe hand out to go with it.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Yes, I could just pass a few of these around. So as the mayor said, I'm Fern Hurley, I'm the Associate Director for Captain Community Giving Services, and I am really pleased to have been invited by Mary to come out here today and speak to you all. So Captain is a nonprofit that has been operating 48 years in this county, providing services. We initially started with services for youth, and over that 48-year time span, we've expanded to services across the lifespan. The particular service that the village contributes financially to is our senior services, and we do have two services for senior citizens. So one of them is the Wellness Van, and that's a van that we operate that takes eligible seniors to medical appointments. So it operates five days a week during normal business hours, picking up people at their homes and dropping them to the doctors, and then picking them up at the end of the doctor and visiting between them to home. The second senior service that we operate is called Care Links, and that's really a program where neighbors help neighbors. So we have close to 100 volunteers that help senior citizens with things like friendly visiting to help them if they're feeling isolated and alone, doing a little grocery shopping for a senior, maybe a little light work in the house, help them change the sheets on the bed, something like that, take them out to get a cup of tea, maybe bring them to the banking or the postage or shopping for gifts for the grandkids. So it's a family visitor who helps that senior do those things that they're no longer able to do on their own, and that really provides an incredible service for seniors. You may be aware that the senior population, the baby boom, is growing in our area, and there's an even greater need for services for seniors. The majority of seniors tell us they want to stay in place where they live. They don't want to have to move on to a different kind of a housing situation. So as long as we can provide these services, it helps the senior, it also helps the caregiver. Sometimes we get a phone call from something like Seattle, hey, my mom lives over there in Saratoga County, and she's needing some help, and that person in Seattle is given peace of mind knowing that someone is checking in on mom once a week, that kind of thing. But you might be surprised to know that there are a plethora of services that cover this village, so I thought I'd give you a copy of all of our services. I'm going to point out some of the ones that do directly serve residents of this village. So we start with the crisis services on the left-hand side of our continuum with hunger and homelessness, and as you can see across the continuum here, we end with the more empowering services trying to support and empower the community. Our mission is to lift people up and build a brighter future, so a lot of things can fit under that mission. We do have a food pantry located in Clifton Park. I did some quick numbers. You can't always tell who lives where, you know, in a database. I have to run that by the zip code 12020, which does include a lot of your residents. We served 106 households from that 12020 last year in our food pantry. That was 349 people, and those collective households need 239 visits to our food pantry. Now, we encourage people and we refer people all the time to food pantries closer to home, but we also allow people throughout Saratoga County to visit multiple food pantries because we know that that's what best keeps food on the table in those households. We have some summer meals locations. We have 16 sites across the county where we're feeding summer meals to youth. You may be familiar with the Saratoga Village and the Katy Ross Home and Home Parks. Those are the closest to here that we serve food at in the summer for kids under 18 and under who need free summer meals. We, oh, a new thing we just started, brand new. I'm not even sure it's on my flyer yet. The county gave us so much issue because of a big concern over increased drug use and vaping amongst teenagers, and we have now placed a CERPA, Certified Recovery Peer Advocate, in four school districts, Boston Spa being one of those four. So we're trying to get to the teens who are experimenting with vaping, which is leading often to other drug use, and provide that peer support as opposed to the disciplinary support that they might receive in this school. We help people with volunteer income tax. We did about 500 income tax returns. I don't know how many came from the village. We did have a village resident graduate from our Getting Ahead Program, which is a program that helps people relook at their life and try to figure out a self-sustaining future and set some goals, and then we match them with a volunteer mentor, and they can keep that mentor for years on end. So we definitely serve residents here with that program. We have a Safe Harbor and a Youth Shelter Program. I can't tell you if there were residents in the program because of the confidentiality, but our youth shelter, which is located over in Malta, is running 365 days a year, taking in teens who have run away from home or who are experiencing some kind of family crisis, and the majority of them do actually return back to a family member, but we're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week for that teen in need. And the Safe Harbor Program, well, it was recently an event here in the village that was looking at missing and exploited children. Our Safe Harbor Program is an anti-trafficking program. If there is a youth who has been trafficked, whether labor trafficking or sex trafficking, we have a trained, certified, trauma-informed case manager who can come in and work with that youth and their family for years to come to try to get them back together with the things that they need to do in their life to, you know, you say recover. I don't know how anybody could recover from a horrible situation like that, but we are helping the youth in our area in Saratoga County recover if they are victims of sex trafficking or labor trafficking. Finally, I just want to mention family assistance, one of our really, really low-used programs. We receive over 2,000 calls a year from families in crisis, usually struggling with economics. Can't pay the rent, got an eviction notice, no propane in the heater, you know, no ability to, you're going to get turned off and don't have enough money to pay for the utility bill. We received over 100 calls in 2024 from the Boston Spa area on those. We work with clergy at a variety of local churches, and we make referrals to all of the different possible programs, government programs, faith-based programs, and Captain also has some money that we can help in these scenarios. So we, we did directly help numerous families in this region with those little crises that come up so that they don't lose their house or their heat in their home. So that's a really quick overview, but I think that's what you asked for. Do you have any questions?
Fern, one of the misconceptions about 12020 is just what it comprises or doesn't comprise. Really, the village is about 15% of 12020 in terms of residency. Is there a way to possibly get a street name, not specific addresses, but just a street name to help identify, is it in-village or out-of-village?
Only in the senior services. That's the only program, which is the one that you contribute for, where the database allows us to put Village of Boston Spa associated with the households. So yes, so in 2024, Care Links helped 17 people in the village and provided 74 services to those 17 people, and the Wellness Express van helped 11 people and provided 76 rides to those 11 people. All of my other databases do not allow for that kind of dig down into the information.
Thank you for.
You're absolutely welcome, yeah.
And you're always looking for more volunteers, right?
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it, yes, because really Captain, Captain has about 75 staff and 30 programs. We have close to 300 volunteers. So we only do the work because the community does the work. So we need people to drive, drive to medical appointments, help seniors deliver food, things like that. So we're constantly looking for folks that are looking to give back to the community. If you think you have a couple extra hours in your week, give us a call. We'll talk over with you what's the volunteer experience that's the best fit for you.
Fern, you said, obviously, we have an aging population in New York State and in this area. Has, you gave us numbers pertaining to the village, and I appreciate that. Have you found that that need has increased, the usage of your programs, or has it decreased?
Absolutely. We are serving more people now than we did in the last couple of years in our senior population, and we've also, you know, keeping a look at the census and the projected numbers. There is projected in Southern Saratoga County to be a much greater senior population over the next 10, 15 years. So we're aware of that. We need more volunteers because of that so that we can help more people.
Are you seeing great increases in your food pantry?
Absolutely, we are, yes, like most food pantries across the state. We are part of the food pantries of the Capital Region membership, and the majority of food pantries have seen year-over-year increases for the past couple of years in food pantry. And more first timers, I guess I would describe them, to our food pantry. Yes.
You know, it's small craft today, but might as well, any questions in craft?
First, I just want to say thank you for all the services that you do. Secondly, as part of the events task force, you were supposed to be part of our Hope for Children event, which is very centric on the trafficking, abduction, abuse, trafficking, and all that. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to come up with a way to stop Mother Nature from having a wrath on us.
I know.
So that will be taking place during Family Fun Day this year.
Okay.
And listening to you speak, Fern, I think that we would love to have you at every one of our events, because all of our events that we do with the task force are centered on children, and just what you're talking about is exactly what we would, we would love to have at every event. And I will see that you get, I already have your contact information because I think you and I have talked.
Yes.
I would like to get those dates to you.
Great.
And just have it on a continual basis.
Absolutely.
It's so valuable that people understand sometimes how valuable it is.
Thank you. Sometimes, you know, just being somewhere at a table and talking to somebody, sometimes you hit on the right person that really needs what you're talking about.
All it takes is that one.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a worthwhile, man. Thank you.
Now, if people can't donate their time, can they donate monetarily?
Absolutely, absolutely. Right on our website, it's possible to donate. It's also can mail in a check. You can specify if you really have, one of these services really speaks to you and you want your money donated to go to food, or you want it to go to housing, or you can specify, or senior services, you certainly can do that, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Fern. Appreciate your time.
Sure, Cap, go.
Just a quick question. We've gone through an aging family member, and we use a lot of offices of aging in Saratoga County.
Yes.
Do you guys work in conjunction with one another?
100%.
Okay, and I'm a teacher in a different district, and I know we donate a lot of stuff, do a lot of, I know a lot of the community areas, school districts donate, and you guys have provided a lot of things for a lot of children in the Capital District.
Thank you very much. We very much pride ourselves on being collaborators. We refer to the Office of Aging. The Office of Aging refers to us. We work together, and we, you know, we get a tough scenario, we're not sure what to do, we're calling them up too, so thank you very much.
Yeah, because it's a lot when you have an elder, older person.
I go through with my mom. I hear you.
Just a last comment, speaking of outreach, we have the Wellness Express on our website. We do not, that I don't believe we have Care Links, at least I can't find it, so that would be a great addition to our website to add Care Links, that not only do they provide services, but they're looking for volunteers. I know we talked about that a couple of years ago, but that would be good to add at this point in time. Thank you very much. You do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fern.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Karen, getting better about not naming that school district in my presence anymore. Spring sports still going on, you know? Okay. It is time for public comment on agenda items only. If you're Mr. Speaker, if you're on Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand if you want to speak of an agenda item. A reminder of the 2025 ground rules, which I did actually get on my screen in time this time. Number one, all comments and questions for the public shall be directed to the board only, not specific department heads, consultants, or other members of the public. Number two, no one shall make statements during the meeting that involve personal, impertinent, or slanders attacks on any group, organization, or individual, a member of the board, an employee of the village, a member of the audience, or a member of the public, regardless of whether the individual sought to be named, is present. Use of profane, vulgar, threatening racial or ethnic slurs is prohibited. Number three, no one will disrupt the meeting with loud outbursts or other disruptive conduct or behavior, including but not limited to obscenity, heckling, taunting slash cheering, physical threats, abusive language, et cetera, at any time during the meeting. And four, failure to comply with foregoing rules may result in early termination. Have a lot of comment in time for a member of the public, in denial of future requests to speak, removal from the meeting, and any other actions deemed necessary by the residing officer or by majority vote of the board. Having said all that, anybody who'd like to speak on agenda items only? Liz.
Just a couple of questions. Liz Cormos, A-9-High. On the abstract, there were two expenditures for, that were BOA-related, and they were classified under Fund for the Arts, so I don't know if that was a mistake.
MSBPA also has some of their ads misattributed to the wrong cuts, so that.
Yeah, I have not viewed.
It just seems strange, BOA, Fund for the Arts. The other comments on the items on the second page, which are I, J, and, no, I and J, those pool fees and library fees, the pool fees are paid by Milton, 16,000, and by the library, they pay 41,000. I looked it up, that's the same amount they paid in 2023. That's three years ago, and we all know that expenditure.
Actually, it's 2018 is the last time they changed, Liz. We ask, they don't, they're not obligated, they won't go off. And so it's one of those situations where I'd love to tell you if we could do more with that situation, but currently we can't. We are working on it, that's all I can say. Just a, hey, I'm wiffy on that one too, Liz.
Yeah.
Take Fern's hand with the agreement. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none? Let us go. If the consent agenda doesn't exist here, so we'll go to motions. Can you get a motion that the attached standard workday resolution be approved? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion.
How is this, are different than what we did last meeting? Just different people?
Yes.
Keep doing it, different people.
Yes. Rebecca, do you want to speak to that real quick?
Standard workday resolution, how's it different from the last one you was asking? It's not, it's just a continuation of all the possible employee positions we have in the village.
All paid.
So we're just, I was finishing out everybody who would ever be listed as an employee in the village.
Right.
You mentioned that the clerk was not listed on there, but she holds several titles, so I just added that on there. So if she's listed, we will have it on there from here on out. Once we get the resolutions passed, they will be on file.
And do we need a separate sheet for elected officials, or that's not needed?
They're on there, yeah. Trustee's roles, who wants to.
There's some separate form, but maybe it doesn't matter.
Well, no, you still don't need to turn in your actual.
Yeah, we still need your names.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm working on it, so it's almost done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion that Kim Anderson be granted permission to conduct a peaceful public assembly in support of democracy on 6/14 from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on sidewalks at the Milton Avenue slash Front Street intersection? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion that the DPDW be authorized to purchase an HMI pump control for Lowell Street at a cost of $12,550? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion that the DPDW be authorized to purchase tank telemetry for the John Street tank at a cost of $8,800? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion approving the water hook-up request for 109 Lowell Road outside Village, which has been approved by Lobella Associates, he said? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion approving the water hook-up request for 32 Greenfield Avenue outside the village, which has been approved by Lobella Associates? Trustee Baskin. Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion approving the attached service authorization from Butler Rowland Mains Architects LLP for work related to a library roof replacement, RFP, and construction services for a fee of $5,500 and authorizing the mayor to execute the document? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can you get a motion approving the attached service authorization from Butler Rowland Mains Architects LLP for work related to. Architects LLP for work related to library interior work, master plan update, basing coordination and grant consulting for a fee not to exceed six thousand dollars plus reimbursables, and authorizing the mayor to execute the document. Trustee Baskin. Trustee Price Push discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You get a motion approving the agreement between the town of Milton and the village of Boston Spa related to the village pool whereby the town of Milton will provide sixteen thousand dollars to the village for pool operations, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You get a motion approving the agreement between the town of Milton and the village of Boston Spa related to the Boston Spa Public Library, whereby the town of Milton will provide forty one thousand dollars to the village for library operations, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You get a motion approving the agreement between the town of Milton and the village of Boston Spa related to events held by the village, whereby the town of Milton will provide four thousand dollars to the village for holding such events and providing attribution to the town as a contributor to saying, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You get a motion approving the attached agreement between Fund One Entertainment Services LLC and the village of Boston Spa for Family Fun Day twenty twenty five, play bowls, games, and related labor for seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement after village attorney review. Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Price Push discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two walk-ons. Get these correct here. Joe, what was your, uh, first walk-on? Just to make sure.
I'm just being the arts, and I'm the Saratoga sod.
Thank you. Oh, can we get a motion for immediate payment of Saratoga sod for the amount of, do you have it in front of you?
No.
He just sent everybody, so.
There it is.
I got it. For the total of seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars thirty-nine cents. Just to explain, normally we wait to, to put it on the abstract, because it was already contracted before, however, they will request immediate payment. Could do that, obviously, we got the issue of invoice today, to at least process it, since it's not on the abstract immediately, so we just need to do a special authorization, pay it out, work was completed, as you can tell in the part. Anybody giving that motion? Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion. Thanks to them for giving us a discount after seeing how well DPW graded the top soil out there in the first place. You see that very honest in the approach there, because we'd already graded nineteen thousand, if it was, for what they're providing, instead of seventeen thousand four hundred twenty-two thirty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I just want to make sure I get the amount right for arts, if somebody has it in front of them.
Do you have it?
One thousand three hundred ninety-nine ninety-eight, or something like that, I want to say, but. Yes, I get a motion approving the Committee on the Arts banner designs and authorizing the expenditure of one thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars ninety-eight cents for banners for silly car.
I'll make the motion.
And authorizing the mayor to execute any paperwork related here too, sorry. Trustee Baskin on the motion. Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor? And, go ahead.
Just let people know what they're working on for the design is taking the haikus that were in the village, about the village of Boston Spa, and putting them on the banners to be used in April, or in the spring, including April. And so, that kind of nice idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. I think that's it for motions. Mayor's announcements, we have notes that the park's looking pretty good, Whizzle Park that is, and special thanks, and, well, like, we and Caitlin and Pirmana and Janelle Coffey were working together actually to put some flowers out there after sod was put in on Friday. Just watching how sod gets laid down, to do that entire park in literally one business day was incredible to watch that take place, but between the fountain going in and all the work that DPW's done, we will not have streetlights tonight, because we are changing the power over the panel that controls them, we're finishing that tomorrow, so those that believe that it's a little dark on Front Street tonight, you're correct, it will be, but that will be rectified. Just got that warning in a little while ago from Scott Kearns on that. But, you know, improving the power load that's inside the park, we're just waiting on a date for the pavilion availability. It's the J, where they talked about in the past already, it's, it's been an incredible run here to see that transformation of that park, and thanks to everybody, DPW's done a phenomenal job, as you heard, they saved us money in the end with respect to even the sod and soil situation, and we're doing everything we can to keep this at a reasonable cost, and Caitlin can speak to that as well, she's been working with me to make sure we're doing things right, but at the same time not overspending, because we realize, you know, the money doesn't grow on trees, including the maple that's out there that is right in the middle of the park. We seem to have received a reprieve on watering breaks after kind of a state of them. We believe that it may have had something to do with testing the vulnerabilities of the system once we switched over to the Colonial Hills Tower, because that tower forces us to keep water at a higher level, smaller tank. And so apparently it causes about four pounds more pressure because of the way we have to fill it, and it may be causing in certain sections a stress test of sorts on some of the infrastructure that might not be ready to take that, or might be on the cusp of something anyway. So over the last week, we've been a little bit more fortunate, we made rinse and repeat, there's no pun intended, in March, when we have to empty it again, there's a second phase of work to be done, but it seems to, we were thinking, is a CHP? No, because different sections are still being affected, way with CHP vibrations that might be caused, so probably not that. It's most likely being caused, we believe, from that pressure differential that's caused with switching towers, and, you know, as much as we like to say we can just rectify that, we, we can't, we can't predict where that vulnerability will show up next, but we actively go monitor it, and handle it, and do it within the notice periods for DOH, or we would notify DOH in that situation. And Karen had to ask for notification, because their ICE businesses obviously depend on it, they don't want to lose a bunch of product there, and we're working with that to make sure DPW provides that kind of notice in that situation as well. So we did it, and we're working on it. Some folks had played about brown water, maybe up in the town of Milton Zone yesterday. There was a major residential fire at Lady Lane on Sunday night that caused the opening of hydrants, and whenever hydrants are open, especially, we're getting close to that flush season, which means that it's primed to be kind of discolored for that when it happens, but when we open it, it starts moving everything around and causes that discoloration in those events, so that's most likely what caused it. Yesterday was not a water main break of any sort that we could tell, so we are monitoring it, and that's kind of our assessment on that. Aside from that, not too much else to update you on right now. I will take on the DPW report when we get to it. I don't have the treasurer's report in front of me, so, Bernadette, while I get that out, why don't you go ahead with the liaison report?
Sure.
Thank you.
Just some updates from the Business Association. Believe it or not, the first movie in the park is next Friday, which is, this year's flying by. We encourage people to keep an eye on their social media about the location, but the mayor thinks we might be able to be in Whizzle Park by Friday with blankets instead of chairs. But anyway, keep an eye on their social media, I don't, Toy Story, correct? Toy Story will be the movie. On June third, they're gonna have a breakfast mixer at eight thirty, to, for not, eight to nine thirty, at Old Church. Also, on June fourteenth, save the date, that is the first day at the farmer's market. I'm really excited about it, as I know everybody is. That goes there. I encourage people to stop by, and also to enjoy the park. Really thankful to Park and Tree and Frank, Caitlin, and everybody just working so hard to get that park ready to go, so it can be used for the summer. And there's some stuff coming from July, but that's, that's the bulk of it for now for the Business Association.
Two things I should have brought up. First, library update in terms of just the condition, not stealing your Thunder Mary, but we are working, and some of the things we approved today are in that vein of getting a variance out to the state, and being able to, by getting that variance, get the work done. We're also examining ways to maximize grant ability to help things like the roof when it comes down to it, that's where Butler, Rollin, and Mays is very good for us, to sort of help us figure out how to best handle these things, and set ourselves up the best possible way for possible grants down the line on it. We're still aiming to get the reopen this summer, June thirty is probably fading as a possibility, but still sometime in July, we're hoping for that to happen. Also, I should state, hopefully here, that the Ricketts property is still kind of in a hellacious cycle of trying to figure out where certain chemicals are residing, so that when they go in one more time, they can go after everything in that situation. Apparently, they, they have added PFAS as a chemical that they're trying to make sure they're cleaning up in the process as well, and that's sort of had added on to the mess of, you know, trying to make sure they were getting everything. They're working on it, but we did get assurance that they're going to try to put a privacy fence in, inside the existing fence, and are willing to work with this on a banner type approach around the fence, as long as they pre-approve what we're proposing, we'll be working on that as things occur here, to sort of improve the gateway approach here. Go ahead.
We should boot that above the team, because we, part of the contract and part of the, we have design team that can work on stuff like that.
Sounds good. Okay, so I will, then I do to loop him in, I was at.
I will, I will do that.
You volunteered so well, so thank you for that. Treasurer's report, getting back to that, water, did you have more?
Yeah, that's finished.
No?
No, go ahead.
I apologize. Water, meter cards, well, rather than residents' mailboxes, on just before June first, remember to fill them out and return them to this building at sixty-six Front Street. I'm mailing, dropping them off in person Monday, Friday, eight thirty AM to four PM, or drop them the, drop box in front of the office. These readings must be received by June thirtieth to avoid a fifty dollar non-read meter fee. Sales tax collection, hey, here's a bright spot, up eight percent for May, which is usually the March period compared to last year, so that means that the village most likely enjoyed the increase as well year over year for that month, because the differentials is a couple percent based on the assessment growth scenarios and ratios. Year-to-date, it is up just barely, but again, it's washing drops that we saw in January and February, so good to see that, at least we're going the right direction. And mortgage tax, Saratoga County approved three point eight million dollars, which is a half million dollars more for the entirety of the county on mortgage tax collections, so that is up a decent amount. And the village received twenty-six thousand three hundred fifty-eight forty-four. So that tells us that things are going decently with the housing market overall, and accounting as well. Back to you, Bernadette.
Okay. One thing to add on to the VSPBA report is that they are working with our library to get some of the programming available at the farmer's market and at the movies, so I believe they're working on making sure that the kids reading club materials are available. So we appreciate them for reaching out to our library, so, you know, some services can still be had over the summer, while we continue to work on the library. And then just to touch on BOA, we, the Revitalized Boston Spa, we had a workshop, the first, there will be a second, last week, very, just really encourage for the folks that came. Yes, there were some people that came from the previous presentation regarding the Angelica site, but a lot of good feedback. Our next meeting, I believe, is June twelfth, if I get it right.
That's the Thursday?
Yes, yeah, that should be the next meeting, and we'll be reviewing the feedback. But for those that couldn't make it, or just felt like too many things were going on, we are going to have a second public workshop in the fall, so more of a, probably get closer to that, so.
Sounds good. Mary, just want to thank you for getting the presentation that we had tonight together. Appreciate you reaching out to Fern and making that happen. I feel bad that, like, you just estimated your library or both between the two of us here, but do you have anything more you want to provide us?
With the library, they're still plugging along, and the friends of the library have been meeting, they're gonna be working towards getting more grants, which they're fantastic at. And as Ray had mentioned, Hope for Children will be at Family Fun Day, and that's on August seventeenth. I don't know if you had mentioned that.
I did mention that.
So, August seventeenth, at the Paragon. And I keep mentioning getting up to the Fall Seniors, if you're in Tuesday, they have a picking session, they've got it, the first Wednesday of the month, which will be June fourth, from six thirty to nine PM. You can bring a snack, and you can also bring an acoustic instrument if you want to take part in their picking session. And if you're more of an afternoon person, they do that on the third Wednesday of the month, which will be June eighteenth, and that is from one, except for the PM. Again, bring an instrument and join in.
Sounds good. Goodbye.
Caitlin sent an update, which was mentioned, but just a courtesy, but I'll read this quickly. Park and Tree Board is enthralled with everything coming together with Old Park. We thank Jay White for designing and making such a beautiful custom fountain for our Sinesusi Spring, and it really is nice, very classy. We also thank Saratoga Sod for the excellent job making the park ring again. Please note that as the sun sets, the park will be reopened for another two weeks. Is that true?
For two weeks, as of Friday, yeah.
Yep. This past weekend, some of our Park and Tree members took time to plant some flowers, and some flowers in the park. As always, much appreciation for DPW, without whom this project would not be possible. They planted several new trees that you should see towards the back wall, they moved and refinished the back hole, and lots of others. The Park and Tree Board also wants to thank everyone who has thus far signed up to participate in the Boston Spa Bloom Initiative. Be Spa and Bloom is a new program sponsored by the Forest Park and Tree Board. That'll be a community-wide event aimed at brightening our village business district throughout the summer season, so different businesses can have a display in front of their window, and there's some kind of contest involved, and I think they're gonna make everybody a winner. If you have any interest or questions, please reach out to the board or check out our Facebook page for details. And the next meeting is June seventeenth at seven PM with Corneille Cooperative Contractor. And then for the Committee on the Arts, they have an open mic night at Real McCoy on June sixth, and they also have, and their next meeting is June seventh at Brookside, and they're always looking for additional people to help them do all their good work. And.
You said the seventh on Saturday? Six? Is it six?
June seventh, I have read their next board meeting, but is that the seventh? Is that the Saturday?
It's the Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, thirty-first of May is Saturday, so seventh is Saturday.
So maybe the seventh?
Wait.
Or no, the first.
Fourth.
It would be the fourth.
Yeah, the fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth is what they said.
So that's one second.
Yeah, seven days, ready?
Oh, June fourth, yeah. There you go. The next one's eighteen, sorry.
This is for open mic. That's fine.
Which is a from in.
That's a fine, yeah. We have a cast.
There's something called a sketch and print art class that is coming up, and that's, it does cost sixty dollars, and it's a series of classes that, I'm not coming to that one thing, that started in August, so there'll be more information on that, but if you want to find out more, go to the Committee on Arts Facebook page, or Brookside also, you do need to sign up. So, yeah, it starts August twenty-fourth. Sketching and beauty around us. Sketching and beauty around us. Learn the basics of nature-inspired sketching and relax at work setting. So then there's an intro to printmaking on the 31st, and then September 7th, sketch and print creative day. No experience necessary, all supplies included, all skill levels are welcome. Basics learned, sign up today. All right, thank you.
DPW report, I'll read. They are continuing working with Old Park, paying a flagpole, grading for SO, or can create for landfills, working on electrical service coming to the park. I believe they're near completion, just a few more things to do for this cycle a bit. They talked about water main breaks, and unfortunately, we lost a dump truck on one of those breaks, hit a little master break chamber, and we don't feel it's worth putting money into it to fix, so we have, we parked it, but we'll be adding it to the surplus list soon. If you have any questions, he says give him a call, scotch burns, that is. They have patched and paved in Buren Street from a water main break a couple of weeks ago. The new pool filter is here. They got the old one out of the building and the new one in, just have to do some plumbing to get it running, so that's great news because that has been a tight situation for us the last couple of years where they kind of used two picks and scotch tape to keep that pool operating at times, and they did it, but this is a much better solution for us here. Sweeper's been out and has about, the sweeper has been out and has about half the village done in terms of the stuff to sweep out from front yards. All flags and banners were put up, and as always, everyday work in maintenance. I'm going to add something to this, though. Peckham was out with CHPE today to maybe take on patching High Boulevard especially. Once they saw the state of High Boulevard, they decided they're going to come through next week instead and do a more appropriate milling fill approach, and then at the end of the season, when they're going to also get High, East High Street, they're going to do the full remainder of what they need to do to get these roads back to the state they should be in prior to the heavy trucks that were on them. So they are living up to their agreement, a good faith agreement with us, and still working to see if they're going to be able to provide us a little bit of a community benefit as well, but nothing solid to report on that yet. But do look out for paving notices coming up, not just for the CHPE work, but also with our general paving schedule. We're going to start up and do it in cycles here, starting in the summer and probably over the next couple of weeks. We'll get you all the updates and notices about what streets, when and how, coming up, so stay tuned for all that, and we'll get you the information you need to navigate that. And as always, it takes a little sacrifice, the sacrifices for a great paved street at the end of the day, so please exhibit patience and safety with our DPW staff involved, along with Evolution when they come through to pave with us. Okay. Let's see here, next up, while nothing reported on Old Business, I did want to give, instead of doing an executive session, Carla and I had talked about the best way to manage this, we're just handing this out. I think you already have one, Mary and Ben. When discussing the fire truck last week, we were asked to work with the fire department, Fire Chief Crow to look at likely scenarios. It shows here what the expected amount toward debt service would be in terms of maximum without cutting into reserves and without even taking into consideration chief's vehicles. Those loans are almost all ready to expire all at once, actually, so just using a very conservative approach here, looking at different scenarios, 4% in 20 years to 8% in 25 years and things in between, to show either we are fine or close to fine without looking at reserves, and once we add the reserves, then we're in better shape. So those are there for you to kind of look over, and if there are any questions, please direct them toward the chief at that point. I, we'll figure out the best way to handle it.
Why not put this up? I mean, this is now a stage of the permissive referendum, potentially, hopefully, you know, no one challenges it, but the whole point of Sean voting yes, as you needed to pass that authorization, was to get this in front of the public. So that's still the goal, is to get these numbers in front of the public.
I just said that, so we'll get it online.
She's brought up.
I didn't hear you say that.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to put them online? I mean, it is 15 days into the referendum, but better than ever. So thank you for putting those online, and that's exactly the way I think that is it, Ben?
Oh, potential park rules for signs and new business. We don't have a, we're not in a position to approve these yet, but just wanted to take a look at them generally. Carla's got to review them, obviously, for matching up against the actual park code that we had put in last year, and so just a question of doing that, and also, is there anything that anybody's got a concern about with respect to those rules? I think Ben and Caitlin at different times had asked for people to flag anything. I haven't seen anything.
I looked at it, mostly looked good. I don't know what the right wording is regarding the usage of the...
Benches, or tables?
The picnic tables, yeah.
I haven't had a chance. I got it Friday.
I also, the old, I don't know what the right way of saying it is, but I think the suggestion might be a little too generic, so like, I don't, maybe somewhere in between, I don't know.
You want to maybe submit to her or the board alternative language, say your feeling on that? That might be the right way to handle that, then. Any other concerns on the rules themselves?
No, it'd be great to get Carla's feedback or report, because she's awesome.
Public comment on any issue at this point? Same ground rules apply that I read earlier that I will not read again. If you're on Zoom, this would be the time to raise your hand on Zoom if you want to give any public comments. Yes, there you go, I see your hand back there. Come on up, and those would still be mine. And as always, name and address, please, please, I'll learn that, and Jennifer's going to turn that camera, we'll get her go, she's on top of it tonight. Sorry.
Yes, angle 32 Kent Street. I'm not sure what is in the park rules. I know I did, Ray and I talked to her a little bit about it. I do hope that no loitering is part of the park rules. Our one homeless guy has already started hanging out there, and our family of fun that generally lives in the back of the park in the summer has already taken over the park a couple of days.
Closes it. Sunset are the general park rules. Area video surveillance in the Philly Park specific ones. The dining tables question. I don't see a loitering one, and so that's probably one that also probably should consider if that's, the wording is okay for that.
Just to remember, these are merely the rules, the law actually is what applies. This is not the law. These are just like the rules that are taking the law and putting them into rules, but not all of the law will be on the rules.
Okay, well, then, is there a law? Do we know if there's a law?
There's 100% a law. This board went months and months and months and did a parks law.
Okay.
Absolutely, and this was discussed during that time.
The one family has already been squatting there all day, on a couple of days so far this summer, so...
So this would be for everybody, not just limited to one person, one family. This is going to be generic to anyone.
Well, that's okay, it's generic, but I'm just...
Just saying, it's to everybody.
It's everybody, you can't sit there all day.
There may be examples occurring currently, which should not be occurring, because no examples, so it should be occurring.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I do see that there's new flower receptacles, I would say, tross, they're tross. I don't know where those came from.
Planters?
Planters.
Are they planters? They look like feet tross, like the girl in the North Country. I have to deal with words, you know? They will be, they will be better than the broken-down boxes. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
If you are a trough, and that's what that might have been right there, yeah, Charlene.
All right, Charlene Dubu, 6 Kaling Drive. I'm actually here on behalf of Brookside tonight because this Friday, May 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00, is our Miller's Backyard Barbecue. So I want to invite all of you, whoever's watching, or whoever's going to watch in the future, come on down. $15, you can't beat the prices, right? Especially in today's inflation market, but you can get half a chicken or half whole pork. If you want to upgrade, for only $20, you can get these first. And let's say your kids don't like any of that, for $5, you can get them a thing of a backroom cheese. So anyway, this is a really important fundraiser for us because it helps fund many of our education programs, and I don't know if you guys are aware, but Brookside puts on quite a few programs, not just field trips, but most of our programs are in-school sessions. We serve about 2,500 kids a year, so we do quite a bit for the community. So come show your support, 3:00 to 6:00. Do, we do recommend that everyone reserve their meals ahead of time. We will have some on hand, but not a whole lot, so don't count on that. So you can visit BrooksideMuseum.org, grab your meal, and we hope to see you.
Saturday, is it?
Oh, Friday?
Friday.
3 to 6, May 30th? 3 to 6, you can pick up, but you can reserve right now, BrooksideMuseum.org.
I've got a thought for you. Baseball is playing in Gilderland at 3 o'clock. It's a weird start time because of the series and everything else. Is there a way to possibly have availability too that some folks might be able to pick them up for, you know, hit in the road or something like that, that we can promote up there for you? Because that, there's going to be a large contingent, I think, going down there now. Also, lacrosse plays at 5 o'clock at home, so at least some people will be staying close to home, but something to think about, why don't you let me know when we can promote?
Yeah, it doesn't need like the details, and then I can look and see what's earlier so they can speak.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you. Want to make sure you maximize it, for sure, because appreciate that. Liz? Again, tell us about our chicken barbecue.
Oh, well, it sounds good.
Yeah.
Liz Cuomo, City Night High. Couple things, on the roads you're paving, are we going to require the homeowners to repair their sidewalks at the same time? That was something indicated early on, that it would be part of the paving schedule. Second question, did, I don't know if I missed something, but did we actually do the parking regs? Have those been done? Because I know it's now summer, people can't find parking spaces. Is it because we don't have those regs yet on the books?
The regs are on the books, it's a schedule that we're trying to finish up here, so we're working on getting that. Carla's been working with us directly on that, exactly what it needs to contain. It's not short, that's for sure, and so we're trying to make sure we get that handled. With respect to your first question, not yet. The probability of doing the forced sidewalk approach, once we redo the code for sidewalks for the next, hopefully, half a year, it would correspond with next year's paving schedule to do that, but if anybody wants to do theirs, got sidewalk without any kind of loan pool or anything like that, they, we get 50% in terms of reimbursement on that, so up to $4,000, I believe it is, so come on down and fill out the information if you want to do your sidewalk over or install one. Liz?
Why are we waiting on the loan?
Because of the implications of forcing people to do it, because they probably don't have the $4,000, many cases just put out for a sidewalk redo, so we're trying to make sure we get the loan pool set up and also work on the law and the wording on it as well.
Is the village going to repair those, on those streets where the trees have...
If there's a village responsibility for something, the village will take care of its responsibility, as it always is.
No, but I mean, not waiting for the homeowner to say, please fix my sidewalk, it was damaged, but as you survey the street, are those there and should you fix them?
If there's a village responsibility, the village will take care of its responsibility.
Last thing, I know you're talking about Wizwall and Caitlin has done an excellent job in the whole Park and Tree, but I'd like to just kind of remind folks that it actually started with the Rotary. They, in 2019, approached the village and said, we need to do something about that park, and it's wonderful to see that it's now happened, and like many things in government, which I did learn when I was a trustee, nothing happens quickly, but eventually, when you're lucky, it does happen. Thank you.
Well, having seen Pete Champagne numerous times, his grandson is a baseball player, he tells us all the time what a wonderful improvement the park looks like right now, and Ray, you up as well, so two very key members of the Rotary, we appreciate the work you've put in to lead the way, and especially on the flowers in the triangle that are...
Yeah, I mentioned, a lot of good feedback from folks that were margining the progress with us. Mary Beth Walsh specifically said a beautiful job, so kudos to you and Kate Van Buren for working on that, so.
Thank you.
I mean, there was a lot of talk, they're like, that's beautiful. So, good job.
I'm going to play catch-up on some things, like want to give attribution to, I was lucky for the benches, or the picnic tables that are in, Aaron's Green Park, you are also on that list of things I want to make sure we get up on in social media as well, so it's coming. You want to speak?
Speaking of Rotary...
Lay on.
In case you have an extra amount of money that you want to spend on food this week, and you want to spend it before the barbecue, because you're going to be at a baseball game or something, I'm going to take your money away. We are having a Rotary fundraiser at the Speckle Pig on Thursday night.
Time to donate?
Time to donate, so as you know, that's one of those things, bring your kids, bring your families, bring your friends, get drunk, and eat a lot.
First, responsibly enjoy.
All right, working tough, just as long as you don't drive, walk responsibly home. So that will be Thursday this week, so come on down, and then the following night, we go up and every chicken.
And you can afford both.
Yeah, oh no, by all means. One thing that I want to talk about, I was not able to make that meeting at Malt Avenue, but I did watch it back, okay, because I wanted to see what that was all about. One of the big things I, I keep hearing, not only for that, but for other things with the historical committee and all this sort of stuff in the village, is this village charm that we have, and I've pulled up a list, and I'll just read through it quickly. Farmhouse, Cape Cod, brief revival, mid-century modern, bungalow cottage, Tudor revival architecture, Victorian architecture, colonial ranch, contemporary, Georgian architecture, craftsmen, federal architecture, Mediterranean, Italianate, I don't know what it is, ranch-style Gothic, colonial revival, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you go through this village, you'll find most of those that I just named in this village. So I'm trying to determine, what is the village charm that they're talking about? I'm not really sure, and I'm not looking for an answer, I'm just trying to throw it out there, saying that this village is comprised of homes of all kinds of architecture. We got a metal house, does anybody know that? We got a metal house in this village. It's all metal, and it's magnetized. If you go inside the walls, if you put a magnet up on the wall, anywhere, it'll hold up there. We have so many different types of architecture to say that we should have just this, or I don't understand that, I'm not as educated as a lot of people.
Is that metal house attractive?
I want one more time.
I was going to say, it is, it's a cool house. He was making a dad joke. It's not good.
Everybody else is going to have that, I'm hearing enough energy today, why not?
So, and also being a visual kind of guy, I've heard a lot of talk about how this development that they're looking at putting in at the Tammerie is going to ruin the beautiful look over the village that we have up on the Tedesco Trail. I've heard that several times, and in trying to be completely transparent, I wanted to see what that looked like. So I have some pictures that I'd like the board to look at, and you can pass them up through here. Take a walk up on there, as I took a ride up there on my scooter. Once the leaves are out, which they were last week, and the week before, the week before, you can't see a whole lot looking down from the Tedesco Trail. I mean, the Tedesco Trail itself is gorgeous, I love that trail, but these are the things you're looking at. There is one house that's down near the end, and it looks like it's about 35, 40 feet from the bank of the Tedesco Trail. It's already there. They're talking the closest they would be to 70 feet.
They're big, yeah.
Yeah, and so, you know, that sort of hooks a hole in that argument, and people were asking, what was going to be a formal housing? If I, if I read it right, or heard it right, they're talking about working family housing?
Workforce, I think.
Workforce housing, okay, which means the average family that's working can probably afford to live there, which would be a good thing. It doesn't all have to be low-income housing, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, gave me back my...
Yeah, I gave you...
My joke time. All right, so I just wanted to bring that up, I wanted you folks to see that, and I'd like those pictures put into the record if we could, because those were taken...
No, it's not part of that, so...
Okay, all right, I didn't know if they put it out.
But you can send it into the planning board, into the college record, that might be the more prevalent place. Yep. Thank you. Anybody else? Jen, could you please confirm our language? Thank you. Anybody else in the room? I see nobody on Zoom. Okay. Can I get a, or no, where am I? This is time for other business, including but not limited to board response and public comment. Sure is. Sorry, I'm on the table, Ben.
Yes, so just like confirmation, are we still on, on track for May 30 yet for the next version of the zoning draft, do you believe?
Yes, I sent you the schedule today. Yes, I sent you the schedule today.
Alright, good. So May 30th is when the public can expect it. And the, the other thing on it.
By midnight?
What?
By midnight? It's not going to be by midnight.
By 11:59 PM.
Or if it, or if it doesn't, I will advise the board and.
And then the other piece on the schedule, we talked about adding a reference to a special meeting. We actually probably could use more than one special meeting for a whole month, but the least one would be appropriate as we agreed last meeting. So I'm just sort of adding that.
Wait, am I adding it to something?
Well, you, you just referenced the zoning timeline you sent today.
Yeah, I didn't, it was just a general June, July, June, July, June, July. There was no specific.
You had a number of milestones, and I noticed the meeting was on there. But, so that would be good to, we talked about adding it to some timeline, whether it's the one you emailed today or some other timeline, that would be great. And the loan for sidewalks, I'm not clear on why we need to wait on, is, can you explain why, why the delay?
Sure. Mary, do you have anything first or, you can start?
Yeah, just reminding the board about the OEM draft.
Yes, yes, I was thinking about adding it on here, but I still want to get some of my own comments out there too. So I think last chance pretty much for me, board members that want to get some of that overview on it. And we'll go to the next steps between these meetings, we'll advise what we're going with, I think. And so thank you for reminding me of that.
You're welcome.
Brenda, anything on your end?
Yeah, thank you.
Can you just answer Ben's question? Because it probably needs to become part of code or at least referenced inside in terms of the change and make sure we can fund it appropriately. So that's why we're trying to make sure we're doing it all at once. We're a little bit bogged down right now with things like, oh, I don't know what's on, and other things going on all at once too. But we're going to start working on that when we get an opportunity, so.
Well, we, we put 150,000 in the budget for sidewalks. And so.
Well, we actually.
Be good to get it out there.
We keep rolling over money each year that isn't used in the hope that, well, we are in that good position to be utilizing and forcing folks to use it. We'll have some funding already set up, so we're trying to make sure they're inappropriate.
I, I thought this was the plan for last year, didn't happen last year, and now it's not happening this year apparently, so that's disappointing. The emergency meeting.
It's May.
The emerg- what?
It's May 27th right now. There's again code approved.
Well, you said you're waiting until January, so you're going to miss this whole season, basically this whole year until that spring.
Anybody that would like to repair on their own has that right to do it right now. And we increased 50% for that reason, so.
We talked about implementing the loan.
Let's, that, that's great, however, maybe promote to people that can afford that 50%. It's a great time to do it. We have the money available to do it, so feel free to promote that back. I'm going to be, I'm sure you can help out with that as well.
Well, we, I guess we bypassed or went past the tax cap for 150,000 sidewalks that apparently we had no intention of actually spending.
No, it's called a private capital planning approach overall then.
That's, that's not how you do it in operation.
And I'll, when you're married, you can really look after that.
Asset controller. The emergency meeting, the last time I have, is if you're going to have an emergency meeting, and it's going to be within 24 hours of when you decide to do that, it'd be good not to just send an email, but to actually text or call us to make sure we see it. Because if it's during the week, there's a very good chance that people like me and Sean who work full-time may not see it in the 24-hour period, see your email. So, so. We, what?
Everybody works full-time.
We may not check our email.
Well, you almost implied that we don't work full-time.
Within the time period. So obviously, if you're having, if you're emailing on a Wednesday for a Thursday morning AM emergency quote-unquote meeting, you should let us know with beyond an email, with a call or a, or a text, that would be nice. Also, I don't think emergency meeting should include anything that isn't an emergency, since you're going to have, chances are, fewer than a full contingent of board there. And for the record.
Yeah. You were asked specifically, or stated, or suggested, you were opposed to or couldn't make or whatever, if you had any substantive concerns, we would have put them on the record out of respect, because that, that would be an appropriate thing to do. You failed to respond. Sean had written an email the next morning, same thing, there were no substantive attacks on the two motions that were there, so there's nothing to put on the record. And that was actually stated in the record with respect to the reach out and lack of substantive comments from you. Again, we would have happily put them on the record for you in your absence in that situation. We did not, I even talked to Carla just to sort of make sure that that wasn't, if we were in that scenario and you gave us something out of line to state on the record, she said, no, by all means, go ahead.
Well, you, you act, alright, so you actually sent that email like 10:47 PM. I had gone to bed, never saw it. But your interpretation of me not responding was you refused to answer, Ben. Secondly, in that email, you did not say for the record, alright? You were asking for our opinion. It wasn't, wasn't that you were going to go on the minutes with our response. But if you send something at 10:47 PM, there's a good chance I may not see it. So, so that's the exact what I'm talking about with the lack of time. There's no need to have that meeting in the morning in the first place. There wasn't, because it's not like they were starting to work the next day.
About the library?
They weren't starting the next day. You could have done it in the evening, Thursday evening would have made no difference.
No, actually, that was a day that you cannot actually, there was a counter meeting going on that day. I agree, yep, so. Anyway, just, long story short, I think what we all learned is check your emails. That's what we're here for.
At 10:47 PM, I may not see the email.
I was at 20, because it was after baseball day.
There was the, the one where you asked our opinion was 10, I think 10:47, it was after I went to bed, so the point is.
Have more time, give us more time and notice, and if you need something quickly, then you should text us. Thank you. Yeah, check your emails.
10:47, I may not check. Before 8 AM the next day.
Anything else? Can I get motions about Trump, I've been meeting you during, at 8:17 PM?
We'll make the motions.
No, we're just. Oh, you were talking about, we will audit ourselves on the categories, those, those always can get fixed in terms of the accounting later on, so. So that motion is trusted for data, trustee Price Course discussion, all favor? Pose, motion carries, everybody have a great night, and we'll see you in June. It's white, obviously.